No one tells a soul we're going to. Girl, we do whatever we want to. Oh, I love the way that you're doing. Cherry baby really get to me. She got the way to move that chair.
She got the way to prove it.
Cherry.
She got the way to prove it. She got the way to prove it.
Cherry.
She got the way to prove it. She got the way to prove it.
Oh, you need.
Timing.
A tick, a tick, a tick, a good timing. Talk, a talk, a talk, a talk, a timing is a thing. It's true. Good timing brought me to you. If Lily, Lily, David hadn't grabbed that stone lying there on the ground. Big old lion might have stomped on him instead of the other way around. But he had timing. A tick, a tick, a tick, a good timing. A talk, a talk, a talk, a talk, a timing is a thing. It's true. Good timing brought me to you. Who in the world would have ever known what the gloves could do? If Queen Isabella hadn't hawked her jewels in fourteen ninety-two. But she had timing. A tick, a tick, a tick, a good timing. A talk, a talk, a talk, a talk, a timing is a thing. It's true. Good timing brought me to you. What would have happened if you and I hadn't just happened to meet? We might have spent the rest of our lives walking down misery street. But we had timing. A tick, a tick, a tick, a good timing. A talk, a talk, a talk, a talk, a timing is a thing. It's true. Good timing brought me to you. Yeah, we had timing. Whoa, 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 good timing. Yeah, 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 timing is a thing. It's true. Good timing brought me to you. Day we had timing. Whoa, 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 good timing. Yeah, 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 timing is a thing.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March tenth, two thousand twenty meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call?
Councilmember Agagianian.
Present.
Devine.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Aaron Ajarian.
Here. Councilmember Quintero, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and with the people, liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation.
Good evening, Mayor. City council members. Please bow your head with me in prayer. God, we welcome your support and peace during this season in our world. We are all aware of the various concerns facing our country and city, and we are especially eager now to receive your wisdom and grace for this time. I pray for our city leaders who day in and day out consider the well-being of all of us in the city. May we support them even as they support all of us. Be with us tonight as we gather as a community. We pray for good health and wisdom in our days. Bless each person here and those who are listening from home. Amen.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the March tenth, twenty twenty regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Wednesday, March fourth, twenty twenty, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What is the next item?
Next is presentation appointments. Three A is the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, March seventeenth, twenty twenty. Those meetings have been canceled. The next meetings will occur on Tuesday, March twenty-four, twenty twenty.
Thank you. And the next item?
Next item is fire chief. Update on COVID nineteen coronavirus.
Ms. Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As we previously discussed, Mr. Mayor, I asked the fire chief to come this evening to provide you with an update regarding all of our conversations that we've had regarding COVID nineteen as it relates to our organization, the community, the partnerships that we have in place with all of our hospitals, Glendale Unified School District, GCC, and other partners included, as well as the business community, et cetera. So with that, the chief has a presentation for you. All of our hospitals are here this evening as well to provide any information that you may seek and answer any questions. With that, I'd like to ask Mr. Lanzas, our chief, to provide you with some information.
Thank you, chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Sylvia Lanzas, your fire chief. If you will, I'm going to go through a short PowerPoint that will take you through the background of the coronavirus, where we are today. As you are all well aware, the situation is literally changing by the minute. I'll show you a website and a dashboard that proves that from just this morning to right now. It's changed quite dramatically. So little background, the CDC in cooperation with the World Health Organization, also known as WHO, has engaged a worldwide resources to respond to an outbreak of respiratory disease caused by the novel, which means new coronavirus that was first detected in China and which has now been detected in over one hundred and fifteen countries. That changed from this morning, which was one hundred and ten this morning. Those countries obviously include the United States. The virus has been named SARS-CoV-two, and the disease it causes has been named Coronavirus Disease Two Thousand Nineteen, abbreviated COVID nineteen. On January thirtieth, two thousand twenty, the International Health Regulations Emergency Committee and the World Health Organization declared an outbreak, a public health emergency of international concern. On January thirty-first, two thousand twenty, Health and Human Services Secretary Alex M. Azar the Second declared a public health emergency for the United States to aid in the nation's healthcare community in responding to COVID nineteen. Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors, along with the Department of Public Health, have declared a local and public health emergency, which included all cities in Los Angeles County, with the exception of Pasadena and Long Beach, which each have their own public health director. The SARS virus is a large family of viruses. We have known several of, SARS being one of them, MERS being another. This disease did come. It's called zoonotic, which means it started in animals and spread to humans. The countywide declaration and the public health emergency and the local emergency does cover us in the city of Glendale, and I want to make sure that that's clear. You may have seen other cities and other jurisdictions make declarations, local declarations. We, under that umbrella being covered by LA County, are covered by the declaration that was made by the county. And what that does is it opens up opportunities for mutual aid should this disease come to Glendale and start to spread within our city. It also allows us to reach out to other resources throughout the state, the county, and the federal government.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, as the chief indicated, the cities of Long Beach and Pasadena declared their own. And the reason being, again, just to reiterate, because that question has come up a number of times, they have their own health department. And so they work through CDC and the health department within their own jurisdictions. Hence, they needed to declare those emergencies in their cities. We, the city of Glendale, were covered through the city of Los Angeles.
Then I'd like to just go through some facts. And as I mentioned, this is literally changing by the second. The current confirmed cases worldwide are a hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and forty-six. The death from COVID nineteen is four thousand, two hundred and sixty-two. Cases have been confirmed in a hundred and fifteen countries, as I previously mentioned. The confirmed cases in the United States, and this was just a few minutes ago, is nine hundred and fifty-eight. Confirmed cases in Los Angeles County is twenty. That was up from fourteen this morning. And there are no confirmed cases in the city of Glendale. And I want to reiterate that. No confirmed cases in the city of Glendale. Although the state and county have declared a state of emergency, public health officials still believe that the threat to human, from human to human, widespread transmission in Los Angeles County is still low. So why the concern? This, several people have said, you know, this is a string of the flu. So why the concern? Why the panic? I think the CDC and the World Health Organization feels that the concern for this virus is so real for two main reasons. Number one, it's new. It's novel. It's never been detected before. And number two, probably the most important, is there is no vaccine. They estimate that they will be a vaccine. There are several being worked on, but they don't anticipate that vaccine to be available for at least a year. The testing. I think it's important to get some facts out about the testing. Locally, Los Angeles County, the Department of Public Health, and two commercial laboratories in Los Angeles County have been approved to conduct the tests. It's important to know that doctors in the hospitals do not perform the tests. They don't have the kits. They don't have the ability to obtain the kits. These are provided to these labs and to the Department of Public Health for testing. The Department of Public Health offers the test at no cost and covers uninsured patients. So anybody who meets the criteria for obtaining a test would receive the test. But there's strict criteria for testing. I want to make that clear, too. It's if you come to the doctor, if you call the doctor and you have flu-like symptoms, but you don't meet certain criteria, whether you've been exposed to other people who potentially have it, you haven't traveled to countries who have the widespread disease, you likely will not receive the test. They're being very careful about the test. And the reason for that is it's not, it's not available into infinity. There is a limited number. We do feel in Los Angeles County, we are more robust and able to do more tests than most other counties because of the ability to have DPH as well as the local laboratories perform that test. I want to provide some facts, but I want to make sure that the tone of my message isn't that I'm trying to downplay this. But I think it is important to provide some factual informations about this disease in relative nature to the normal common flu. Eighty percent of the people who have this disease won't even know they have it. They won't show signs and symptoms. They will get it. They will maybe feel ill and then get better and never even know it. The twenty percent of the population that they're really concerned with is the elderly population. Patients seventy and older are the vulnerable population. There are no confirmed cases in the United States in any pediatrics that I'm aware of. They anticipate, and this is hard to predict, but they, right now, the predictions from the World Health Organization is that the death toll from coronavirus will be in the three percent range. That's far lower than the normal common flu. In the United States, to date this year, we've had eighteen thousand deaths from the common flu. Last year, I read a couple of different sites that had anywhere between three hundred thousand and five hundred thousand deaths last year from the common flu. I want to make one more point very clear. The Department of Public Health is the agency that approves the test. If a doctor feels that a patient meets the criteria, they get approval through the Department of Public Health to conduct the test. It's not done at the hospitals. The lab is sent to DPH's lab or one of the commercially available labs, and that is where the test is conducted. The test is a nasal swab and a mouth swab. That's how the test is conducted. How is the virus spread and what are the symptoms? Like other respiratory illnesses such as influenza, human coronavirus is most commonly spread to others from an infected person who has symptoms through droplet-produced coughing or sneezing. That's important. That is the most common way that it is spread. Droplet-produced coughing or sneezing. Close person-to-person contact, such as caring for an infected person, touching an object or a surface with the virus on it, then touching your face, are ways that the disease is currently being spread. We're learning more and more each day about how the new coronavirus spreads and how long it takes for people to become sick. Right now, they are saying that signs and symptoms usually show between two and fourteen days. That's why you hear a lot of these incubation periods are fourteen days. The symptoms are very common to the flu. Fever, cough, shortness of breath. In some severe cases, there are some other complications, but those three are the most common signs and symptoms of this disease. What have we done? As Ms. Beers mentioned, the city departments, city manager's office, the fire department, police department, human resources, public works, community development department, parks department, and many other departments have closely been monitoring, collaborating, and meeting with citywide stakeholders. The three hospitals are with us today. From Glendale Memorial, we have President, CEO Jill Welton. From Glendale Adventist, we have Dr. Stephen Brass, the chief medical officer. From USC Verdugo Hills, we have CEO Keith Hobbs, who are here with us today. Them and their staff, as well as us. From the fire department, the city departments have been meeting regularly. We had a meeting this morning, a very productive meeting, to make sure that lines of communication are open, to make sure that we are staying abreast on the most up-to-date information, and to make sure that we are all prepared should this come to Glendale. Staff has remained closely engaged with county, state, and federal agencies to ensure we are kept up to date on the evolution of the disease and its spread. The fire department has adjusted protocols in our Verdugo Dispatch Center, as well as placed temporary universal precaution steps in place to ensure our first responders are safe. I read an article this afternoon that the FDNY had an exposure to several EMTs, and they have some EMTs in quarantine. Northern California also had a case where some firefighters were exposed and had to be quarantined in firehouses. We are ensuring that our public health, excuse me, our medical personnel at the hospitals, as well as our first responders, our police officers, are prepared, and we have the necessary equipment to keep them safe. City has adjusted high-traffic counter and public space cleaning to a minimum of four times each day. We've limited out-of-state travel for city employees. We've adjusted sick leave policies to encourage people who are sick to stay home. And we remain active on social media to ensure the public is kept informed, up to date, and the information that we provide is factual and from reliable sources. And I'll get to that a little bit in the end here. We have remained in constant contact with Area C Disaster Coordinator throughout the county to ensure that a city is covered under countywide declarations. And this morning, we put together a task force consisting of the three local hospitals and staff from the city and the fire department to ensure that we are meeting more regularly, that steps are being taken to ensure that we are prepared should this become a human-to-human transmission within our city. We are prepared and are hospitals. So what can the public do? Biggest thing is help us stop the spread of germs. Very simple health and hygiene is the recommendations from the CDC. Avoid contact with people who are sick. Avoid touching your face. Stay home when you are sick. Cover your cough or sneeze with a tissue and throw it away in the trash can, and then wash your hands when you're done. Clean and disinfect frequently touched objects and surfaces, and wash your hands often with soap and water for at least twenty seconds. Some additional ways that we're asking the public to help us is to continue to practice routine flu prevention guidelines, as I mentioned. Continue to follow city social media and GTV six public information outreach. Remain calm. Respect each other's space. Do not assume that someone of a race or nationality is likely to have COVID nineteen. This new virus has infected many people in a hundred and fifteen countries. We are all in this together. If you think you may have been exposed or believe you have the disease, call your doctor before going to the hospital. We ask that the public please trust the information. Get information from trusted sites. Social media from non-trusted sites is not the place to get information about this. There is so much rumor. There is so much witchcraft and all kinds of other stuff that's going on out there that is just not factual. So go to trusted sites. We encourage people to visit our website, glendaleca.gov/government/coronavirus. We have set up a website just for up-to-date information on the city side on the coronavirus. Publichealth.lacounty.gov, www.cdc.gov, and the World Health Organization website, also known as WHO. As I mentioned previously, staff from the hospital are here with me, and I'm available to answer questions, as are they, if you have any.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Agagianian.
You just was reading that from flu, every year, three to five hundred thousand people die. But that was in the world that you didn't mention, but you meant in the world. Because in this country, twenty, over twenty thousand die from the flu. I just wanted to mention that. And I just want to say, every person during an hour touches his face, nose, eyes more than twenty times. This was just for fun of it, of course, not to criticize anybody. President Trump was saying that he never touches his face. And then on March second, they showed him that he's, you know, touching his face and where he was thinking that for a long time, he never touched his face. Just for fun of it, since you became, made it so serious, everybody is so serious now. I just wanted to mention it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian.
Yes, do we know how many cases do we have in China?
Yes, in fact, thank you, Councilmember Garpetian. I'd like to pull up this dashboard. This dashboard is provided by Esri, and it is literally updated by the second. So currently, there's a hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one. I'm curious if that's changed from when I wrote it down? Yep, it has. In China, there's eighty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four in mainland China.
So the hundred and eighteen thousand, eighty thousand is from China.
That's correct. And ten thousand, one hundred and forty-nine is in Italy. Eight thousand, forty-two in Iran. In the Republic of Korea, seven thousand, five hundred and thirteen.
And we heard so many different reasons, wearing a mask or not wearing a mask. Can you explain that a little bit, please?
Maybe one of the hospital staff can tell me. From what I have been told, the mask is better on the person who's infected than the people who are healthy. Dr. Wang from Glendale Memorial will come up and further.
Hi, everyone. Yes, so the idea is that you're putting the mask on so that you're not putting the respiratory droplets out, right? So wearing the mask is better for the person who's considered infected. Everybody else doesn't really need to have a mask on. That's different if you're in isolation and that you're going to be going to touch that person or handle any of their mucus, blood, anything else like that, then you need to have some protection on. And that includes a mask and gloves and everything else. But generally, the public doesn't really need to be wearing a mask to help them. It's for the patient to not spread it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other question?
Mr. Quintero, I'm curious. Glendale Memorial, Verdugo Hills, how many rooms, how many sort of isolation rooms are available locally?
So at Glendale Memorial, we have seventeen off the bat, and we can upscale as needed a little bit.
Hello, I'm Dr. Brass, the chief medical officer of Ventus at Glendale. At our hospital, we have twenty negative pressure rooms. In addition, we, in anticipation of potential coronavirus, we have an expanded unit that we have built that is ready to roll out with ten extra negative pressure beds in addition to anticipate ED overflow in case we should need to. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Armon Dorian. I'm the chief medical officer at USC Verdugo Hills Hospital. For Verdugo Hills, we have five negative pressure rooms, but we have a surge plan which would create a separate floor for the potential surge if it were to happen here in Glendale that would accommodate those number of patients. So it's all dependent on the current status and description of what the current condition of the isolate is. For example, right now, the condition is it's airborne transmissible, where you would need negative pressure isolation. It seems that soon, there may be a lifting of that, and it becomes a droplet isolation. And if that is the case, then any individual room would be good enough. So it's just something to keep in mind as things, as the chief said, dynamically change. So does the description of the virus.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I certainly don't want to speak out of turn with the doctors here, far smarter people than me that are in the room. But I do want to make a point that the majority of the people who are being treated for this are sent home. The idea is not to have mass amount of peoples in the hospital with this disease. Is that? So I think that's just a point of clarification. When these people are looking for how many hospitals? When these people are looking for how many hospital beds, the majority of the people that are being treated are sent home in isolation to get well.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, hospital CEOs and medical officers for giving us that update. Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda is the Police Chief regarding a presentation on pedestrian right-of-way laws.
Ms. Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, per your request, we have a presentation this evening from our Police Chief related to right-of-way laws, based on the number of enforcement activities that we've had in the community. I think there have been some questions within the community in terms of some of the laws that govern our pedestrians and our drivers, and the Chief is going to spend some time in terms of educating all of us, hopefully, as well as the community, in terms of pedestrian right-of-way laws.
Thanks, Chief. I asked for this because your office had done a targeted enforcement last week, and you had posted the results, and it was the genesis of a lively discussion on one of the social media platforms. And in reading those comments and responses, it was clear that many of the responders and participants were absolutely clueless about one of our most basic traffic safety laws, and that's why I asked you to come forward and set the record straight. And this may be an ongoing invitation for you to discuss other particular nuances of the vehicle code and pedestrian safety. So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Carl Povellatis, Chief of Police. I will take a moment to kind of walk through the legalities, but even before I do that, it's like, what I really want to emphasize is, while we can discuss legalities, and we can discuss who's quote-unquote "at fault" for an accident, what we're really all trying to achieve as a community is not to have the accidents in the first place. And I think, you know, when we look at pedestrian-related collisions, one of those things is they're usually all preventable, but it requires attention on both people's part. You know, the very basics of, if you're a pedestrian, you don't want to step into a roadway until you're sure the cars are stopping and the driver has seen you. And if you're a driver, you need to be watching for a pedestrian, because they may step off the curb, and, you know, and a lot of the laws that we talk about, and when I talk about when we set up operation things, and we talk about something called perception and reaction time, that time between that you see something wrong and, you know, you see the pedestrian step into the roadway, and how long it takes you to stop, is about a second and a half. But that's assumed that you're actually paying attention, and you're not distracted by something else in the vehicle, which may also be illegal, and the one that comes to mind is a cellphone, because we see that very, very commonly. So what I want to do is just kind of walk through the basic laws on pedestrians. And so this is very, very simple. If a pedestrian is crosswalk, whether that crosswalk is marked or unmarked, and we'll take a look at those in just a minute, whether they're marked or unmarked, the vehicle is required to yield to that pedestrian. Period. End of subject. And when we talk about that, that means that the vehicle has to slow down, and in essence, stop. And so I'm going to put the, you know, and I think sometimes if we all drive, we get very used to being in our insulated box of a car with the radio going, and, you know, you don't necessarily have that sensation of speed, you kind of forget that you're very, very vulnerable as a pedestrian. And I tell people, one of the things, being a police officer, that I absolutely really hate to do is make traffic stops on a freeway. And I have a lot of respect for CHP, because I don't know how many people have ever stood there with cars whizzing by you at 70 miles an hour, because they will not move a lane over, and you can feel your pants move as somebody goes by. That is not a comfortable situation when you're two feet away from something that can literally unfortunately take your life if you step back at the wrong moment. So, you know, when we have people crossing the street, California law was ingrained in my head by my mom and dad, is that the pedestrians have the right-of-way, they do, and cars must yield to the pedestrian in the roadway. And if we all work on that premise, irrespective of what the law says in specificity, then we would be in a pretty good place. So let's just take a look at what we talk about, because everybody goes, what's a crosswalk? Where can, you know, where would you expect a pedestrian to be? Where do you not expect a pedestrian to be? On the left, it's an unmarked crosswalk. Anywhere that you have a, where corners come out and meet at right angles, whether it's a, you know, that's the standard four-way intersection, whether it's a T-intersection, those are unmarked crosswalks. Pedestrians have the right, and have the right-of-way, to cross the street in those places. So it is not jaywalking. It is not illegal for a pedestrian to do so. They may cross the street there. Then we have the one on the right, and that one is, you know, one of our more standard crosswalks that, you know, people are used to seeing. And again, if you're in a marked crosswalk, a pedestrian also has the right-of-way in a marked crosswalk. Here's kind of an aerial view, because we have crosswalks that look a little bit different. We have some that have white edge lines, and we have a, you know, they have like brick color in the center, and that's a crosswalk. We have some that are just white lines that go curb to curb, and then we have the continental ones, or the zebra crosswalks, where there are the series of lines that go across the street without the, without the edge lines. They can be white, or they can be yellow. They are all, they are all considered crosswalks. Here, you don't see any marked crosswalks, but each one of those corners, every one of those is an unmarked crosswalk. So if we're going to eliminate the confusion there, as I said, everybody there, you know, a pedestrian can cross the street there with no issues. So two pieces, because the law always has two sides when we talk about this. So a pedestrian cannot jump out in front of a car, and would be unwise to jump out in front of a car. So we always tell pedestrians, make sure that you look, make sure you see that the car is slowing down, that it acknowledges that you are there. So, you know, but once the pedestrian leaves the curb, the car has an obligation to yield. And I think what I really want to do is that second paragraph there, that even though you have Section B that says a pedestrian cannot jump out in front of the car, or leave the roadway, or leave the safety of the sidewalk to cross the road, they have to give the vehicle enough room to be able to stop, that no matter what, the driver is not relieved from responsibility of exercising due care and safety for the person that is walking in that crosswalk. And I don't know a simpler way to say this, the expectation, if there is somebody in the roadway, stop for them. And I will talk about other streets in just a second, but if I could get that message across to everybody, you know, I think we all have parents and grandparents and kids, and when I talk about pedestrian enforcement operations, it's like, just because someone's crossing the road, even if you think they're doing it illegally, does not give you the right to whiz by them at 50 miles an hour, two feet off there, and put their lives at risk. We need to, you know, as I've told a lot of people, this is our community, it's our responsibility, we're responsible for how we drive in our community and making sure that it's safe. And so if someone is walking in the roadway, we can address the issue whether they're supposed to be in the roadway, but the one way to, the one way we do not want to address that is by having a traffic, having a traffic collision. And the last section, just to clear up what jaywalking is in California. It has a very specific definition. It is not, it is not crossing the street anywhere. It is if you cross the street between two signal-controlled intersections. That is jaywalking. So it's not two intersections, it's two signal-controlled intersections, or if you have two intersections controlled by police officers. That is the definition of jaywalking. So let me just give you a, an example. Everybody lives in usually a residential neighborhood. You want to go to your neighbor across the street. Do you have to walk up in a residential neighborhood to the corner, cross the street, and walk down? No, you don't. Unless those two have signal lights at those two corners, you can cross the street. You have to yield to cars that present a hazard, but you can cross the street. So, you know, when we, when people say somebody is jaywalking, and it is something that we hear very often when we do our pedestrian enforcement operations, oh, the person's jaywalking. No, they weren't. They were in an unmarked crosswalk, where we do most of ours, it'll be an unmarked crosswalk. Or if someone's crossing a residential street that's not jaywalking, you still have to exercise due care and caution for the pedestrian in the roadway.
We have a question, Chief.
Quick question, Chief. This happens on Kenyatta Boulevard every day. So what if you are between two streets, two intersections, one has traffic light and the other one doesn't?
It is, it is not jaywalking.
It is not jaywalking.
In order for it to be jaywalking, it has to be two signalized intersections. So if you have a signalized intersection at one, and you have a stop sign at the other side, crossing the street is not... So a lot of the ones off of Kenyatta, you may have a signal light to control traffic onto Kenyatta, and it's, and a stop sign to control traffic that, I'm sorry, north-south in Kenyatta, it may be signal-controlled, but the other side might be a stop sign, or if you have a stop sign at another part of the block, and you cross between the signal and the stop sign, that is not jaywalking.
Wow. Thank you.
I'm not saying... So, so that's the legal definition, but again, you know, while I'm up here talking about legal definition, I think the message that needs to go out is you need to be smart about how you cross a street. If you're in a business district, if you're on Kenyatta, you want to go to a corner. You don't want to be somewhere where that, where a driver doesn't expect you to be. That's when we have a lot of surprise accidents. It's like, if you're driving down the street, you know, you have to think about kids potentially running out between cars. Those are a surprise. So in order to cross safely, especially on a busy thoroughfare, my recommendation is going to a corner. You're on a quiet residential street, I'm really not telling you, walk all the way, you know, a quarter mile at the end of the block, go around to come down there. But if you've got to cross something busy like Glen Oaks, my recommendation would be go to a place that has a signalized intersection, because what you see is a lot of high-speed traffic, and getting across three lanes just to get to the median is going to present a challenge. So part of this involves using what I'm going to just call common sense about where you, where you decide to cross the street. But in any case, you want to make sure vehicles are yielding, yielding to you at that point. So the other thing that confuses people, so multi-lane roadway, Bram Boulevard, potentially Glen Oaks Central, where we have a crosswalk across the street, one car stops for a pedestrian that is crossing the roadway. It is illegal to pass and overtake that car. Period. You cannot see around that car. You need to yield like there was a pedestrian in front of you, because you cannot see what direction the pedestrian is necessarily moving, and that car creates a blind spot. So the law says that, you know, if one car has yielded to a pedestrian, then anybody in an adjoining lane, you cannot pass to yield to the, or you have, you can't pass the car that has yielded to the pedestrian. So you need to stop and yield and wait till it's safe before you go. I think, this one's going to take a second to load, and I think I need someone to hit play for me. And we might need that.
You want to get the volume? Yeah. If you can get it.
Yeah. It looks like they want to cross. I better stop.
I'm proud of you. Pedestrians have the right-of-way at crosswalks and at intersections, marked or unmarked. If you see a person who looks like they want to cross, you should stop. Once they step off the curb, you must stop. And be careful when you see a car stopped at a crosswalk. Someone you can't see may be crossing. There's a few other right-of-way situations you should know about. When an emergency vehicle has its lights on, you must move to the far-right side of the road and stop.
That'll be a future topic, Chief.
That'll be a future one.
We have problems with that, too, I see in our city.
That's why I figured I'd let it run.
Pull to the right and stop as soon as you can. Emergency vehicles often use the wrong side of the road to continue, so stay stopped until it is passed, then it's a lane change. So signal, check your mirrors, and look over your shoulder. When it's safe, pull into the driving lane again. School buses with flashing red lights mean that children are exiting the bus, and you are required to stop, no matter what side of the road you are on. If you are on the opposite side of a raised barrier, this does not apply.
So, can I ask, do we have these on GTV-6?
No, but you're, you're just a hair ahead of me.
Okay.
Because these actually come from the DMV and are basically what you would find in the, in the DMV manual, and so I think it was kind of interesting when you were talking about what was posted on social media, when we put the pedestrian enforcement, or the pedestrian safety enforcement operations on there, because I saw some interesting comments about the, about the police department and what we're doing, is that one of the things that we're looking for is actually doing something very similar to this with our police officers, and basically bringing up what I'm just going to call Driver's Education 101, to go through some of the common violations and some of the common things that we see that either impede traffic or create dangerous situations, and put that out for GTV-6 and on social media to reach the younger audience. And so that will be kicking off here within the next month or so to do that. So as I've mentioned a little bit earlier, if a pedestrian is crossing outside a marked crosswalk, they have to yield to traffic that's within, that might be a hazard. But once on the roadway, again, just reemphasizing for the drivers, that they have a duty to drive with due care and caution for any pedestrian on the roadway. So that covers people when they're crossing the street to go across to the neighbor's house or something like that. Drivers do need to yield. Again, you know, the idea of if you violate this and a police officer, you get a citation, you should not be severely injured when you have a 3,000 or 4,000-pound vehicle hit you because you're walking in the roadway. So again, I will reemphasize the message that what we're trying to get is, if you see a pedestrian in the roadway, slow down and stop. Let them get through the roadway. If we're having an issue because a pedestrian is crossing where they shouldn't, we'll come deal with that, but that's not a point where you should personally engage with your car to do that. So let me just talk about our pedestrian safety enforcement operations. We have picked these up, as I said, as it comes to no surprise. When we look at our traffic collision statistics, our pedestrian collisions, we don't do, we don't fare very well as a city, and when we talk about pedestrians over the 65 of the 58 comparison cities, we're number one being the worst for that. So we've spent a fair amount of time looking at this, but one of the things we've started to do is repick up the pedestrian safety enforcement operations, which means that we have a police officer go out, and we ask them to cross the street. And then we have officers doing the actual enforcement. The unfortunate part is when we talk about this, is when people don't yield to pedestrians, it's not like they slow down to 2 miles an hour and slowly pass the pedestrian. They're going by the pedestrian at 30, 40 miles an hour, and that's what makes this extremely dangerous. So what we do, and we set these things up, is I will, you know, we go out, we take a look at the intersection, we pick a crosswalk, we pick an unmarked crosswalk, and we ask the... We will not allow the officer to step off the curb unless there is, the vehicles, any approaching vehicles are far enough away that they can safely stop. One is we don't want our employee to get hurt, but we're not here to jump out in front of a driver either. So when we look at this, we actually look at that, it's like, as I told you before, perception reaction time, for you to see something that's a hazard, and for you to decide something and begin to apply the brake in this case, takes about a second and a half, and so your vehicle continues to travel. And then you have the stopping distance. So when we look at a street that's about 30 miles an hour, you need about 130 feet for all of that to happen, for you to see, you know, a pedestrian crossing, for you to react to that pedestrian crossing, and to bring your vehicle safely to a stop, is about 130 feet. So trust me, we put a margin in here, but no officer stepping off the curb on a 30-mile-an-hour street unless that car is at least 130 feet away, and we actually mark that for the officers so that they, that they do this safely. If you do not yield to the pedestrian, yes, we are out there issuing citations, and it said, this isn't, we're not doing this to necessarily be punitive, but we are looking for a change in driving behavior. You said, most of them are going by our, by our pedestrian at 30, 40 miles an hour. And then when it's an unmarked crosswalk, we're often told, oh, well, that was, they were jaywalking. Again, I will come back to the response. Even if they were jaywalking, why are you driving by them at 30 or 40 miles an hour? And so if you start to take a look, these are some of the violations we just happened to capture with a, with a camera, and you can see people, you know, in vans driving by, and you are feet away from the pedestrian across the street, and we're not exactly hiding the pedestrian, wearing one of our bright yellow vests. So finally, just to come back to, close this off with the education piece, you know, while we're out there doing the enforcement operations, you know, to make sure that people are yielding to that, we are also looking at pedestrian education. And so with the older adults, we have and continue to do education in our adult daycare health facilities to educate older adults on how to safely cross the street. And again, none of these accidents really should occur, because the pedestrian needs to look for the car. And it's like, crosswalk, marked crosswalk, unmarked crosswalk, doesn't matter. If that car is moving so fast, and it is not going to yield to you, do not step in front of it. It's great, you know, you can say if you get hit that you were, you were in the right-of-way, but that does you no good in the hospital. Do not step in front of it. And if you are a driver, please make sure you're watching for pedestrians, and if you see a pedestrian in the roadway, slow down, stop, let them get out of the roadway, give them a safe distance before moving on. And with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Questions from council? I have one speaker card, but first I want to say, Chief, and just make it clear that at no time has the Glendale City Council burdened you with a quota for your officers to ticket. The proceeds that we receive from any one particular moving violation are just a few percentage points of the actual fine.
It's a very small fraction of the total fine. I think we get 50% of the base fine, but everybody has to realize that base fine may be $25, $30. We do not, the police department does not get money from issuing citations. We do not, I do not have a quota. What we are looking to do is improve traffic safety in the city of Glendale, and so these operations are geared at places where we've had either complaints, or we have collisions, or there's a high propensity for those types of collisions to try to get people to comply with yielding to pedestrians in the roadway.
Thank you. Ms. DeVries?
You mentioned that you're going to be putting some PSAs or kind of pedestrian education 101 on GTV-6. What about driver's education? That's always been my, my belief, that when driver's education was taken out of our schools, that was the end of safe driving. And so is there any plan, or do we already... And so is there any plan, or do we already have something like that on GTV six?
Well, actually, what I'm looking at doing is actually, we're actually kind of calling it Driver's Ed 101. So some of it involves pedestrians, but there are other things that we've seen, whether it's like, I don't know how many people you see make right turns and they go left before making the right turn, and you need to... There are other things that we will be working on. So we're looking at doing, you know, 15, to keep it within the attention span for today and keep it kind of short. Maybe try to figure out how to do it with a little bit of, frankly, sarcasm or humor, to kind of go, hey, this is how you need to drive your car in order to work in a busy, you know, basically suburban to metropolitan environment with a lot of traffic, that we can move it through in an orderly and safe fashion.
Great, great, good.
Thank you, chief. We all thank you and your officers for trying to enforce the laws and to keep us safer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a card from Herbert Milano.
Mayor Najarian, members of the city council and city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. This is a topic of which I had spoken several times, but it's been a while, at least 10 years. And I'm going to refer to a report that the police department prepares in terms of crime statistics. It's available on the web. In 2019, for the whole year, there were 117 vehicle pedestrian collisions. In 2018, 105. In 2017, 106. But in 2016, there were only 79. And I had asked, I believe, the public communication officer, I forgot his name. He said that there were some special programs that were done in the year that caused that significant decrease. And so we had a conversation with regard to what may have caused that significant decrease. And so some of the questions that I was posing were the following. I know that there are three major areas that are important with regard to controlling these type of pedestrian vehicle collisions: engineering, you know, education, and enforcement. The question here is, what does the data say? During what time of the day is it more prevalent? Is it during the day or the evening? Are there any specific streets that are, are they connector streets or major streets? Is it daytime or nighttime? Basically, what I'm trying to figure out is what are the analytics that can tell us where the efforts should be placed? What is the age of the person who has been injured or was involved in the collision? Is it a young person? Is it a teenager? Is it an elderly individual? Is there a problem with language? Is it an immigrant? All of these questions basically allow us to grab the statistics and figure out what programs may be more effective in solving it. Now, like most Glendale residents, I find, at least perceptually, that the traffic drivers, I mean, the drivers are getting much more aggressive, significantly more aggressive. I don't know the reason why. And I don't know if this is perhaps one of the documents that may be searched for to see if there was an egregious process in which the drivers are basically addressing the traffic. But I figured that, I wanted to address the fact that in order to create a good program that is going to be effective, we need two things: analyze the data, and then follow up in the following year to see if the programs that the police established or that Public Works established is having results. Because unless you do it every year and do an evaluation, it's okay to fail on things that may not work. But I think that many of the things that sometimes have an effect in one year will not have an effect the following year. For example, all the circular signs that we see on the sidewalks and so forth, and sometimes on some of the doors. But people get acclimated to that idea. And I don't know if those are going to be effective. But I think that you need an annual report to figure out what is actually working and not working. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move to the next item, please.
Next item on the agenda is the consent items, including minutes. Following a routine that may be acted upon by one motioning member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration, may do so by making such request before motion is proposed. There were cards submitted for item, I believe...
4F.
4F.
So we have a consent calendar without item 4F. Is there a motion?
I would like to move the items except the 4F.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Barpedian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Please read 4F.
4F is Management Services regarding consideration of a request from the Fernandinho Tataviam Band of Mission Indians to provide a letter in support for federal acknowledgement. Motion to approve submission of a letter in support of the Fernandinho Tataviam Band of Mission Indians' application for federal acknowledgement.
Thank you. When I was briefed on this yesterday, I thought it would be appropriate to invite several of the tribe members to give us a bit of background and history on their tribe. Ms. Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, if you'd like a short report prior to the individuals from the public speaking, I would ask John Tectalian to give you a short report on the site.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council. I will keep this very brief, because we do have members of the tribe here who can do a much better job of describing their efforts thus far. Several weeks ago, we received a request from members of the tribe for the city's support in supporting their application for federal acknowledgement. This is a process that they started back in 1995 and have switched gears a little bit, because laws had changed, which is why it's taken so long to get to this point. I understand that they're expecting to receive a final notification from the Department of Interior by the 13th, if I'm not mistaken, regarding the status of their application. This tribe has lineages that go all the way from Simi Valley, Santa Clarita Valley, Antelope Valley, and the San Fernando Valley, dating back to the late 1700s. We have members of the tribe here. We have the vice president, Mark Viasenior, who can come up, make a quick presentation. And we also have a video that'll probably answer many, many questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Hello, councilpersons. As is introduced, I'm Mark Viasenior. I'm the tribal vice president. Just a little background. Our tribe has been seeking recognition in all forms since contact from the Spanish period to the Mexican period and to the American period. In 1892, they had the Mission Indian Relief Act. We had a federal investigator working on our behalf to put our land, or to put our tribe to be on the list for federally recognized tribes. However, we did not have land, because it was taken from us illegally. And so at that point, we were not given status. In the 1970s, our past tribal captain, Rudy Ortega Sr., had asked the government that we be recognized as a tribe. This was before formalized recognition process. That process didn't exist until 1978. In 1994, we had initially submitted a letter of intent to the Office of Federal Acknowledgement saying that we would be seeking federal recognition or determination by the Office of Federal Acknowledgement for determination. And then in 2015, our petition was finalized, because a new set of rule changes came into place, and we finally submitted our finalized packet. And as it was stated on Friday, we will be receiving a determination on our Phase 1. The current regulations are a two-phase process. Phase 1 determines, if you get approved for the Phase 1 determination, you move on to Phase 2. So that's where we're at in our current status. We've been working with municipalities for a long time in the Cultural Resources Department, mitigating impact to Native Remains per like NAGPA rules, CEQA rules since 1970 California Environmental Quality Act, and then AB 52. We've got support from LA City Council, Los Angeles Board of Supervisors, City of Palmdale, and there's a few more that are coming on that are going to be voting to support us as well. We'd like to ask for your support. We have had some interaction with the City of Glendale in the cultural resource space. We try to mitigate impact and also mitigate the impact it takes to developers, because, I don't know if you know much about this process, but if remains are found or cultural, it could be a kind of a mess for developers who are looking to develop. All we've ever wanted to do was to work with our neighbors, be good neighbors to everyone else, and then also protect our cultural resources. And if you have any questions? No, I think there's...
Mr. Quintero?
I'm very happy to support this. How many registered members do you have?
Right now, we have around 800 enrolled citizens of our tribe. And yeah, we have 800 enrolled citizens, yeah. And they cover the expanse all the way from San Diego, Arizona, Oregon. But most of our people, I'd say 90% of them, are still within our traditional boundaries. So from the lineages that come from Los Angeles, the villages of Los Angeles, San Fernando Valley, some of the villages on the eastern side, Santa Clarita Valley, and then Palmdale, Antelope Valleys, yeah.
Thank you. Now, I have two other cards from some of your members, and we also have a video. So how would you like us to... Would you like the video first, and then to hear from the Peres Pachecos?
Yeah, the video's fine.
Video next, okay.
Fernandinho Tataviam Band of Mission Indians, the People Facing the Sun. This presentation is about the history of the tribe, a sovereign Native nation of northern Los Angeles County.
Present. This section covers the present administration, programs, and goals of tribe. The distinct community of the present-day Fernandinho Tataviam Band of Mission Indians originated in the lineages, villages, and cultures of the period preceding the establishment of Mission San Fernando, from which the natives received the name Fernandinho. Mission San Fernando was established on September 8, 1797, at the village of Achoy Kaminga, and, for years following, enslaved Native Americans from the lineages in the geographically surrounding areas, ranging from present-day Simi, San Fernando, Santa Clarita, and Antelope Valleys. Today, the tribe consists of a voluntary coalition of those lineages bound together by a tribal constitution. The tribal administration office is located across San Fernando City Hall in the city of San Fernando, California. The tribal senate is composed of nine members elected from two legislative tribal districts who are responsible with setting tribal policies, creating government programs, and working towards self-determination. The executive branch is the administering body of the government responsible for upholding the Tataviam Constitution, tribal code, and ordinances. The Council of Elders provides important decisions on highly sensitive projects involving cultural resource preservation through expertise in cultural heritage and ancestral traditions. The Administration Department is responsible for the day-to-day activities that tie together the many departments within the Fernandinho Tataviam Tribal Government and the many programs provided to its membership. The Tribal Historic and Cultural Preservation Department is committed to the protection, preservation, and promotion of the cultural heritage of the Fernandinho Tataviam community. It provides government-to-government consultation services under CEQA, AB 52, SB 18, and other environmental protection laws in order to prevent and/or mitigate potential impacts to its tribal cultural resources. The Education and Cultural Learning Department is an education and leadership development initiative which uses non-traditional and traditional American Indian teaching methods while incorporating Indigenous values for Native American students. The Health and Social Wellness Department advocates for social wellness in the community through mind, body, and spirit. This department advocates for Indian children in dependency cases under ICWA. The Office of Tribal Citizenship is designated to receive and process applications for Fernandinho Tataviam citizenship pursuant to the provisions of the Fernandinho Tataviam Constitution and laws. The following are the Fernandinho Community Centers and 501(c)(3) nonprofits. PUCU Cultural Community Services is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit charitable organization providing services for low-income American Indian families. We offer relief to those in emergency situations, helping and fostering, adopting, and educating American Indian youth and cultural awareness. Tataviam Land Conservancy was founded in 2018 and holds Tataviam land in perpetuity, preserving a property's unique cultural and environmental values. Land ownership offers increased protection to cultural sites, because the TLC owns and manages the land or enters co-management partnerships with like-minded agencies and conservation partners. In addition, it prevents the loss of cultural connection by providing a place where Tataviam people can gather, teach, and learn about their cultural heritage. Hara Makna American Indian Cultural Center is maintained by PUCU Cultural Community Services and is filed under a special use permit with the Angeles National Forest. Hara Makna celebrates the first five nations in the region, including the Gabi Leno, Fernandinho, Ventureño, Catanamoc, and Serrano. The tribe generates revenue and supports tribal self-determination through for-profit services. The Fernandinho Tataviam Band of Mission Indians has a corporate and commerce commission. Under this commission, the tribe has established Pesique Strategies Corporation in 2016. Since its establishment, Pesique has ventured into renewable energy, affordable housing, luxury cigar lounges, and electric trolleys. These efforts provide jobs and generate short, mid, and long-term revenue to serve the tribe and Los Angeles County.
Historic. This section covers the rich and unique history of the Fernandinho Tataviam Band of Mission Indians.
In the pre-Spanish era, a singular tribe did not rule over what is now known as Los Angeles County. Instead, each lineage was a tribe, and within each lineage, there was a hierarchy of leadership. You can view the lineages written and read. Let's zoom into the village at present-day Encino, so that you can see this closely. Each lineage was politically and economically autonomous and maintained sovereignty over its local area. Each lineage consisted of speakers from more than one language and were linked to neighboring lineages through trade, marriage, and social exchange. The tribe traces its ancestry and kinship network through the mission baptismal records to 26 lineages circled on the map. There was no collective tribal entity above the lineage, because each lineage was sovereign. However, the politically independent lineages were linked to one another through language. The tribe uses the term "regional group" to represent a group of lineages that are connected, because their people speak one or more dialects of a language. Regional groups are written in white boxes on the map. To be clear, these are not tribes. There was no tribal group above the lineage. Instead, the regional groups are confederations of shared ceremonial understandings and practices. The sovereign lineages within these groups share regional ceremonial gatherings, as well as beliefs of the afterworld. Breaking down the tribe's name. Fernandinho is a Spanish term and represents the Native Americans of diverse territories who were forced into servitude by Mission San Fernando during the Spanish period. Tataviam is a term for the regional group of lineages that inhabited the lands just south of the Catanamoc people in present-day Kern County. Today, their people are known as a Tahon Indian tribe. The Catanamoc word "Tataviam" translates to "the people facing the sun." Picture to the left is Eugenia Mendez, a progenitor of the tribe and well-known informant to John Peabody Harrington. The tribe continued to actively protect its homelands. In fact, after Mexico passed the Secularization Act of 1834, 40 Fernandinho lineage leaders petitioned the Mexican governor for their village lands. In addition to the ex-Mission San Fernando lands, tribal captains received land grants held in trust throughout Los Angeles, including Rancho Escorpión, Rancho Encino, Rancho Colanga, and Rancho Tahanga. These land grants were supposed to be preserved in the American period under the Treaty of Guadalupe Hidalgo in 1848. However, land in Los Angeles County, specifically areas with natural water sources, became increasingly valuable. And the local state courts were against our ancestors' claim to the land, which made it impossible for the San Fernando Mission Indian defendants to affirm rights to land that would have formed the foundation for a reservation. Further, under the Mission Indian Relief Act of 1891, federal agent Frank D. Lewis, the special assistant U.S. Attorney for Mission Indians, worked to secure Fernandinho land rights through a land case for nearly a decade. Although the special agent was unsuccessful, Fernandinos continued their connection to village lands, including tribal captain Antonio Maria Ortega. Antonio came from a long line of leadership. His mother maintained the Rancho Encino land grant for the Fernandinho people until their lineage was dispossessed by a Spanish settler during the American period. Antonio fought his entire life to secure land for his people and was even taken to court in a well-known land dispute case in 1876. The San Fernando village land was sold without the consent of tribal captain Rojario Rocha, prompting other tribal families to occupy the traditional village alongside Rojario on June 1, 1876. As a result, the Fernandinos were taken to court by two land developers, former California Senator Charles McClay and Benjamin Porter. And in 1878, the Fernandinos were found liable for trespassing. They were fined $500 and an additional $50 for each month that they occupied their own land. The local tribal community who rallied alongside Rojario included future captain Antonio Maria Ortega, whose name is highlighted in the court transcript to the right. Pictured in center is tribal captain Rojario Rocha circa 1900 in San Fernando, California. Due to the dispossession of Rocha's land grant, which was held for the collective benefit of the tribe, the Fernandino Totavium Band of Mission Indians was not made a federally recognized tribe. After a 30-year battle in Los Angeles, Rojario lost title to the last remaining land. McClay and Porter began evicting the Fernandinos. And in 1885, McClay evicted Rocha in the midst of friny season, dumping him and all of his belongings just outside the city of San Fernando. His wife Maria died of pneumonia immediately. At over 80 years old, Captain Rocha passed away shortly after as a homeless refugee on his own homeland.
After the evictions occurred and some very adverse publicity was circulated about McClay and Porter in the Indian Rights Association brochures, McClay tried to defend what they had done by claiming that they had afforded Rojario Rocha and his family and others various forms of compensation and alternative residence to ease the pain of the eviction. But it was clear from affidavits that the Indian Rights Association obtained from De Silas, from Rocha, and even from the sheriffs that had carried out the eviction, that no such offers were made. The eviction itself was brutally harsh to Rojario Rocha and the others who were living on the land and whose land it had been for thousands of years.
Today, not many people know who we are or realize that we are still here. I ask that you support us and learn who we are as Native people in Los Angeles County and how we contribute to the community, serve our country, and process even though, truthfully speaking, we were supposed to be erased. Our mere existence alone is a miracle.
124 years later, the tribe celebrated Rocha's legacy through an MOU with the city of San Fernando that included land management of Rudy Ortega Sr. Park, which is located on a portion of Rocha's property. The tribe has been practicing its inherent sovereignty regardless of its status with the federal government. In 1971, late tribal captain Rudy Ortega Sr. sent several letters to the BIA in request of amending the tribe's status for the purpose of establishing a reservation. On September 28th, 1971, the BIA Acting Area Director responded that it would not be possible to acquire lands without first verifying the tribe's legal status. This communication occurred prior to a formal recognition process was set in place by the BIA. Then, on January 18th, 1974, Captain Rudy Ortega Sr. wrote to the BIA in request of five things: an Indian clinic, California Indian Historical Center with a library, souvenir gallery, cultural handicraft center, and school for Indian education. We are proud to share that although our status has not been corrected, we have achieved all these visions of Captain Ortega and our people. On April 24th, 1995, the Fernandino Totavium Band of Mission Indians submits its letter of intent to the Office of Federal Acknowledgement. It would be exactly 20 years before the tribe's petition is formally reviewed under the 2015 regulations.
The Academy of Motion Picture Arts and Sciences would like to acknowledge that tonight we have gathered on the ancestral lands of the Tongva, the Totavium, and Tumash.
Our homelands are part of us, and even though acknowledgement by itself is but a small gesture, it is a beginning to a greater public awareness of Native sovereignty and cultural rights, including the federal recognition of our tribe.
Thank you. That was a great, great video. Lot of great information in there. I do have two cards, one from Hector Perez Pacheco. If you'd like to come forward to be followed or in conjunction with Julia Perez Pacheco. You can go together if you want, or... Anyway, welcome.
Thank you very much, councilmembers. If you could tell, this is my daughter. And I serve as a commissioner for the County of Los Angeles on the Hill of Solis, on the Community Action Board, as well as I serve under Eric Garcetti's, that's the Workforce Investment Board, and as well as I serve as a community member within the Native American community in Los Angeles. And I have the great pleasure to work with the Fernandino Totavium Band of Mission Indians for over 30 years, working with the current president as well as the vice president. And I have to share with you, all of you, the beautiful work that they have done within the Native American community in LA County and elsewhere. They have committed their resources, their time, their energy to work in terms of building education and resources, in terms of understanding information about their culture and working collaboratively with many tribes throughout the LA region as well as throughout the country. So I'm here to strongly urge your support for their petition. As LA County Board of Supervisors unanimously support the Fernandino Totavium Band of Mission Indians. The city of Los Angeles unanimously support the Fernandino Totavium Band of Mission Indians. They have... This has been unprecedented, and we would like to ask the support of your council.
Thank you.
Ayayancho Kapo Shankey, ayaymikashani, nokasuti, Julia Perez Pacheco, sulpaki yaktamasikuna. Hello, councilmembers. My name is Julia Perez Pacheco, and I'm Quechua and Guadalquivir native, and I'm 15 years old. And I'm part of the Fernandino Totavium Band of Mission Indians TAMIT program, which is an after-school and summer program. And I would like to urge your support for the Fernandino Totavium Band of Mission Indians because they've done a lot of good work for my peers and everybody in the area because we're getting connected to our roots and our culture, and we're able to be ourselves and be who we are and not have anyone take that away from us. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Mr. Quintero.
I'm very proud to move 4F. Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Absolutely.
Carpedian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Congratulations. You can add Glendale to the list of organizations.
Next item, please.
Item five is city council and staff comments.
Let me start from my right. Ms. Devine?
Thank you. Mayor and council, my colleagues, I have two requests tonight for a second on a couple of ideas or items that I'd like to bring back. First of all, I would like to bring the standards for landscaping and parkways back for another look. Couple of reasons: It's a complaint-driven ordinance, and it's very difficult to fairly enforce. And it's also been, to my regret, been used as a weapon by neighbors. And I feel that there has to be some way that we can design or write this ordinance that it is enforceable and fair. And so I'd like to have a second from one of my councilmembers to bring that item back.
Although I won't be here to work through the details, I agree. I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Quintero. And if we do that, my question is, number one, can we suspend citations and stop the enforcement?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, councilmember Devine, we can suspend citations and hold all of that in abeyance while we prepare a report to bring back to the city council. Independent upon council's decision at that time and direction, we'll move forward with that recommendation at that time. But at this time, I have that authority to be able to suspend any citations that are in place.
Okay. And then I'd like to look at the way we can suspend this reinspection fee, maybe perhaps...
All of that would be all in one.
We need a resolution for that, or...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as Ms. Beers indicated, the city manager will have the authority to basically suspend enforcement, which includes both issuing some new citations and the citations that are in process until we bring that item back as soon as possible.
Okay, good. So we'll look forward to bringing that back and...
And just for clarification, you talked about the enforcement component, but you also want to talk about the standards themselves?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, yes. The entire ordinance. And the second item that I'd like, I guess I need a second from my colleagues. I recently attended a conference that Senator Portentino held on SB 45. This is a Wildfire, Drought, and Flood Protection Bond Act. He's one of the cosponsors. But the interesting thing about this bond, this bond, the Senate bill, is that it's it's going to be, have an impact on climate change and reduce impacts of climate-related natural disasters, provide funding for concrete steps to help reduce impacts of rising global temperatures. And but the best part is the funding. It's a $5.5 billion bond, and the funding will stay with the regions. In other words, the funds that we get will be propelled or ruled by the Santa Monica Conservancy. So we will have a close ally in how the funding is allocated and what projects that our city can be involved in with the LA River... What is it? LA River Reclamation Group, and a lot of other interesting projects that could come to fruition here in our community. So I would like to ask staff to bring back a report on SB 45 and see if council will, again, approve a letter of support for SB 45.
I attended the conference, and while I won't be here to receive the report, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Mr. Quintero? Mr. Carpedian? Oh, was that a negative? And I don't have anything either. So let's move on to the next item. Are there any staff comments at this time?
No, sir.
Okay. Next item, please.
Under three-minute general public comments and community of announcements, there are four cards. And first speaker is Camille Levy.
Camille Levy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council staff. It's with mixed emotions that I say thank you so much for the opportunity these past two years to take steps to help make Glendale a livable, age-friendly place where seniors can age in place. My last meeting as chair of the committee will be next week, March 19th, and I invite you to come and attend. I hope that the committee will continue on a path that the Senior Services Committee has started, focused on coordinated efforts for seniors' needs, and look to affordable housing that incorporates seniors, not just senior housing, so that families can age in place, ages can live together, just like they do in Oregon and Massachusetts in Claremont, California. I won't be a part of that future. I am moving on March 30th to Florida. I've reached that point in time in my life where I need to make some decisions and be a little bit closer to family. So I am moving to St. Cloud, and we'll begin a whole new journey there. I will miss all of you and the friendships that I have made. I really want to thank the Senior Services staff for all of the support that they have given to the committee as we inaugurated this whole new piece and made it successful. I'd like to also thank all of the city staff who have afforded me many wonderful opportunities in Glendale. I invite you all to come visit me whenever you want to go to Walt Disney World. But I also wish you well as you continue on that journey to make Glendale the most livable city in California for all ages. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Camille, how long have you been working, volunteering, and just kind of working to make life better for kids and elderly in Glendale?
I actually came to Glendale in 2001 and left Glendale... Actually, I came to Glendale in 2006, left Glendale in 2012 for a couple of years and came back and retired about four years ago. I know that's hard for all of you to believe, but yes, I am retired.
Well, Camille, you've left your mark here in Glendale with Glendale Healthy Kids and the senior program, and we'll all miss you, that's for sure.
Thank you. And don't forget, wellness works not on our watch, September 11th through the 13th.
Okay, you got it. All right.
Thank you, Camille. Chad Kroger?
What up, council? My name is Chad Kroger. In America, we have a holiday called Labor Day where we honor those who have jobs. Massive respect to those legends, but what about the people who don't have jobs? Should they not be honored? Some of the coolest people in this country choose not to work, like my dog Serge Quinones. He's super good at breakdancing. He knows a ton about the band Sublime, and he's dated three chicks named Amanda. Also, if you ever feeling not stoked, you can just sit in the back of his van and vent. He's a really good listener, and usually parks at 8069 Detroit Street, so I encourage you all to cruise sometime, but look out for street sweeping on Fridays. Or Chance Motherway. Such a sweet dude. He brews beers in his mom's poolhouse, and coolest thing about Chance? He gives those brews away pro bono. Or myself. Excluding my activism, I'm currently not employed by anyone but the sun, the beach, and my bros. So yeah, we all pursue our passions. And with these free spirits in mind, I'm hereby petitioning that we have a non-Labor Day, a holiday dedicated to those who don't work. And how do we honor those who don't work? I'm thinking everyone will get the day off, and then we'll all crush brews and have a fat cookout, so... Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you. JT Parr?
What up, council? I'm JT Parr. I also don't have a job. And I agree with Chad that we need a day to celebrate people who value chilling over billing. We want this day to be perfect. For me, that's at my friend Ross's pool, slightly stupid plan, a grip load of seven-layer dip, and beer pong games totally free of squabbling, which is why we need an official rule set for beer pong. I think we can all relate to the frustration of going to someone's crib and having to debate rules of play. You, council, need to establish a unified rule system that we can all unite behind. After extensive research throughout the Southland, I think the rules should be as follows: 10 cups, 3 beers, 2 reracks, no mid-round rerack, no blowing or scooping, have a solid line established for elbow violations, although this one is tough to adjudicate, spiders allowed, no rebuttal shot off a double make, no ad hominem attacks, like my buddy Rod saying I don't finish things, and just out of etiquette, no smacking the table. Thank you. I'd also like to sing a song now about not having a job. I know you're always on the night shift, but I can't stand these nights alone. And I don't need no explanation, 'cause baby, you're the boss at home. You don't gotta go to work, 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 but you gotta put in work, 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 work. Thank you.
Thank you. Marc Vila Senor? I think he left with the tribe. I don't have any other cards for this portion of oral communications. Let's move to the next item.
Under adoption of ordinance as that 7A is financed regarding ordinance amending Title I of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995, GMC TAD Chapter 1.13 relating to the use of digital signatures and electronic signatures introduced by Councilmember Quintero on February 25th, 2020.
Mr. Quintero?
Move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Carpedian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item.
Mr. Mayor and council, item 8A has been taken off calendar. Item 8B is human resources regarding memorandum of understanding, MOU between city and International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, IBW Local 18. U1 is a resolution approving and adopting the MOU commencing July 1st, May 19th through July 31st, 2023. U2 is a resolution providing for the establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees covered by the city IBW MOU.
Thank you. Ms. Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we're very happy to bring forward an MOU with IBW Local 18. This has been a long process, and our team of folks within the city organization, headed by our chief negotiator, Mr. Matt Doyle, did an outstanding job in bringing this to closure. Mr. Doyle is here to provide you with information related to the MOU that is before you and answer any questions that you may have. With that, Mr. Doyle.
Mr. Doyle?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'm pleased to bring forth resolutions authorizing the adoption of an MOU between the city and IBW Local 18 for a term of four years. This marks the culmination of a rather lengthy negotiation process that began last spring and extended... and extended through the end of the calendar year. The previous MOU expired on June 30th, 2019, and the proposed MOU begins July 1st of 2019. However, the economic terms of this MOU do not take effect until today, the adoption of this resolution, which is March of 2020. As is always the case, both sides enter these negotiations with specific goals and objectives and try to meet at a place where compromise is reached and mutual goals are achieved. Both sides in this process wanted to put forth a fair and reasonable labor agreement with a desire to keep costs under control, yet ensure that our compensation and benefits package is remains competitive. With that in mind, we're pleased to bring forth a four-year MOU with IBW, which runs from July 1, 2019 through July 31, 2023. The largest item in this agreement is the cost of living adjustment, and that's something that affects every employee within the bargaining unit, which is approximately 125 to 130 employees. The cost of living adjustments each of the four years, the first year is a 2 and 1/4%. And again, that is non-retroactive. That begins effective March of 2020, and then the remaining three years of the MOU provides a 2% adjustment each of those years, effective August 1 of each year. The other large item is a retention or longevity pay for our electrical line mechanic series employees. This is probably the most marketable group within this bargaining unit. These are the employees that we have the most difficulty recruiting for and retaining, and what we've done is negotiated an effort to retain them through the means of longevity pay. Those employees within this series who have between five and nine years working within the electrical line series will get an additional 4% above their base salary, and those with 10-plus years will get an additional 9% beyond their base, above their base salary. There are other minor adjustments for individual employees and classifications of employees with specialized skills, licenses, certifications, mainly within our water section. The agreement also has an adjustment to the sick leave cash out for when these employees retire and have unused sick leave at that point. The unused sick leave gets converted to a retirement health savings account. Currently, that amount is at the rate of $22 per hour for each hour. That's being increased to $25 for each hour, and this is an important means of savings for their retiree medical costs. Those are the main highlights of this MOU. As I said, through the end of this year, we had reached a tentative agreement, I'm sorry, at the end of the 2019 year, we had reached a tentative agreement. The IBW brought forth this agreement to their membership in January, and they informed us in early February that had been ratified by their membership. So, at this point, we highly recommend that the city council adopt these resolutions and put forth the MOU for the next four years. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. This was, as you mentioned, a long process. You started, I understand, almost a year ago with this. The contract ended in June. We continued negotiations until we got a recent agreement. So, thank you for you and your team. We had a little dinner with you folks to show our appreciation, and we very much mean all that. Are there comments from council? Okay. Is there a motion? An 8B, one or two?
So moved.
One and two. Is there a second?
No second.
No second? Would anyone like to say how they're feeling? Is there some objection to this from someone on council?
I'll second it.
Okay. It does provide modest raises. I mean, let's get into it. We don't like expanding our budget, but we very much like to keep our workforce and keep them within the Glendale family and not have to lose them after training them and recruit and start from the beginning again. We are challenged with other utilities that pay better. LADWP is one, the private sector. Edison is a great draw for many of them, but I am sure that we reached a very fair agreement with them, with the IBW, in striking the balance between maintaining the workforce and protecting the taxpayers' money that we are the stewards of. So, Mr. Quintero?
Yeah, that is the reality, that we lose trained individuals if they're not brought, maybe not to the top scale that LADWP pays, but certainly to a scale that's competitive. Then the second thing is the type of work that these people do. This is handling high-powered electrical currents. I mean, we had a death a few years ago, I remember, who was a journeyman who had been with us for many years, and he died in a windstorm. So, it's unvarying. I'm happy, number one, that an agreement has been reached, and I understand exactly why we, you know, try to treat this particular class of employees the way we do. They're highly skilled workers.
And I wish they were here. I understand they had another obligation, but today, as a matter of fact, in the driving rain and wind, there was an outage due to a automobile accident striking a pole, and those guys were up the pole, stringing lines, repairing the circuits, and they have a very difficult job, and when we need them, they are there for us. So...
Mr. Mayor, they do outstanding...
To all you critics out there that say we pay too much, I will proudly stand and defend the bilateral agreement that we have with them at this point.
We've been singing their praises all year long because we've had a very tough year with electrical and power, et cetera, et cetera. So, I'm happy to have seconded this. Glad we could reach an agreement.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Carpentier?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Thank you.
Next item.
C is Glendale Water and Power Regarding Report. Owner's Engineering Services for a Proposed Grayson Repowering Project Alternative Limited Notice to Proceed Phase. C1 is motion authorizing city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Black &amp; Beach Corporation for owner's engineering services for the proposed Grayson Repowering Project Alternative Limited Notice to Proceed Phase for an amount not to exceed $702,400 plus $850,000 contingency for a total authorization of $852,400. It is a resolution appropriating $852,400.
Ms. Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as you're aware, we were before the city council last year related to the Grayson Repowering Project and all of the pieces that went along with that in terms of timelines, council's consideration and direction and recommendation based on what was before you that evening. As the clerk read into the record, this is the limited notice to proceed phase of the project. Mr. Mark Young is here to take you through a PowerPoint presentation that outlines what this contract is for, as well as provides you with information related to some dates in terms of what's coming forward in the future related to this project. Christine Godinez is also in the audience and can answer any questions that she may need to answer based on this item as well. Mr. Zern would have been here, but he's resting at home and he's not feeling well, and he's taking our direction really well in terms of not coming to work when he is sick. So, with that, we'll go to Mr. Young.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Mark Young, Deputy General Manager, Glendale Water and Power. I've been asked to give you a little PowerPoint presentation to update you on the Grayson Repower that would help clarify what an OE is and where we are with regard to very high level where we are with the repower. So, there's two different project phases that we like to consider during the Grayson Repower. One of them is the limited notice to proceed. The next one is a final notice to proceed. With the limited notice to proceed, we are looking for conceptual design. We're looking for converting one of our older units that is integral part of the existing power plant to be able to stand alone so that it can function during the demolition and the repowering phase. The permits and studies, their emission, purchasing emission offsets, issuing of bonds, and there, at this time, there would be no purchase of equipment at this time. And then what we'll do is we'll bring you, sorry, we'll bring you the environmental impact report and then request a final notice to proceed, in which, at which time, we'll go through a detailed design, we'll purchase the equipment, start the construction, and then commissioning of the new power plant. We like to consider the project in different phases. One of them is the engineering procurement and construction phase for the Tesla battery. They call that the BES. The other one is the thermal unit, which was the EPC for the 93 megawatts or five Wartzilla reciprocating engines. And I think of those as two complete circles. So, we're going to purchase that, we're going to purchase those, and they're going to be in isolation. They'll be required to construct those, and then what we'll need to do is we'll have to integrate the two circles into the Glendale infrastructure, so we'll have to hire another company to integrate those two circles into the Glendale infrastructure. So, with those three different companies, we were looking to get an owner's engineer, which is Black, the request is for Black &amp; Beach, to manage those three, to make a seamless transition during the process, and it's been proven many times that having an owner's engineer reduces time and reduces money in a project that's complicated. The unique part about this project is we divided the owner's engineer into two different aspects. One was the limited notice to proceed, and the other one would be, we would put out another RFP for the full notice to proceed owner's engineer so as to give different perspective if needed. This is a definition of an owner's engineer. I think it's quite appropriate. It's a team of experts that serves as an independent advocate for the owner. An owner's engineer can simultaneously enhance opportunities, reduce overhaul, overall risk, and ensure deliverable that is closer to the owner's expectations. The current status of the repower, specifically for the Tesla Power Island, both the physical arrangement and the electrical arrangement are about 90% complete. The Wartzilla Power Islands, you can see that the physical arrangement is about 80% complete, and the electric arrangement is about 75% complete. It's much more complicated to try to incorporate five reciprocating engines into the concept.
Mr. Quintero?
Can I just break into your presentation?
Yes, sir.
You keep mentioning five, and I know that could possibly be the goal, but we're talking about starting with two. Is that correct? Or we haven't made that determination?
I think the proposal is for 93 megawatts or up to five, and we've, I have not kept saying up to five. I should have said up to five. Where we're going to look, we're going to look to see if there's any opportunities to reduce the amount of Wartzilla engines in the proposal, but it is up to five.
All right, that makes a difference.
Sorry.
Talking about up to five.
Correct. And I was going to ask that the language in the proposal be five or less. So, it's like either up to five or five or less, and I don't know.
And we have no, and Ms. Devine and I spoke about that earlier today, and we would have no problem in terms of that language if you want to make that part of the motion when the time comes. We would have no problem including that in the contract.
So, we're at air permitting. So, Wartzilla had gone to Southern California Air Quality Management District to propose a process in which they're going to model the Wartzilla engines in order for us to, in the future, get air permitting application? Let's see. Next step would be the air permitting application. So, after they do dispersion modeling, which is they indicate where the stacks are going to be, they anticipate what kind of run productions that are going to happen, they come up with an air dispersion model, and that will be used to apply for an application to AQMD. And then we would purchase offsets accordingly. We will come to an EIR. That EIR is the environmental impact report. We presently have an EIR. We'll be amending that EIR and bringing it to council. If you bear with me just a little bit longer, you'll see that I have a timeline at the end, and that timeline kind of makes it a little easier to understand. The LNTP is very critical with regard to fire protection, wastewater, hazardous materials, and geotech, in addition to number nine unit standalone design. So, all these things would need to be considered in addition to the Wartzilla or the Tesla circle or Power Island equipment. The OE would also help us with demolition, the demolition contract. They would look at writing up the RFP, evaluating proposals, and allowing us to come up with some type of independent answer to selecting demolition and balance of plant EPC contractor.
Yes, sir. Talk about the bond.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's next.
The bond, the bond funding will come after the EIR approval, and I will get to the timeline, and we can talk about the timeline a little bit because I'm just showing you little snippets. It becomes a little bit more complicated. After the bond funding, then there would be a full notice to proceed, and that full notice to proceed would then allow, under your direction, would direct staff to purchase the Tesla equipment, the Wartzilla equipment, engage in the balance of site contract. We would then proceed with demolition, and we would move from there. So, this is the timeline, and I think the timeline makes all the confusing comments that I've made much easier to understand. The limited notice to proceed OE, which is what I'm asking for, really goes up until city council action of the full notice to proceed on May 2021. From present to that time, after May 2021 to the commissioning of the Wartzilla plant, that would be the FNTPOE. And you can see that council is approving and council is getting updates and actions at various times throughout this process before the actual full notice to proceed. At this time, I'll take any questions.
Mr. Agajanian?
Actually, what I am bothered with is in three weeks, we have two new council members will join us. So, why we have to rush this through now and not to wait until they come along, they be on the council, and they have to work on this for a long time? I mean, when they come here to sit on this dais, then they have to be involved with this project until 2025. I don't know, I'd be here at that time, but however, but at least these two newcomers, they would come up with some ideas that they can work with you guys, and they can come up with solutions, or they would be, have some new ideas to express. So, this, we decide now for them, and they're obligated to continue this. That kind of, to me, it bothers me.
Councilmember Agajanian, I understand your concern, but the council gave direction to GWP to proceed in this manner, and this doesn't prevent council to stop the project at any time in the future. It doesn't, it doesn't oblige the city to purchase any equipment. It just allows us to get an engineer on board to do the things that are necessary to do.
Excuse me. It doesn't obligate those who would... It doesn't obligate those who would come here to agree what you want to purchase, but this is the design. You're going to have engineers will be involved with this in the design aspect of it. So maybe they have new ideas, maybe they want to get involved with this, because they will be the part of this matter or this project. So it will be better if they get involved when they come here after three weeks. Why we have to rush for approving it now, that's, still, I'm not convinced.
Well, I would say, if I could just get in there, look at the glass as being half full. You've got such experienced and qualified council members who have gone through this process for years and years. Should we not take benefit of their expertise in this decision?
Yes, they are excellent city council members. I never seen in my life such a knowledgeable tool. Frank Quintero and Barton, council member, Garpetian, they're excellent council members, I agree. But however, they are leaving us. So new people are coming on board, and as if we are, we don't want them to be involved with this. I mean, to me, I said I would rather see, we wait for another two weeks until they will come here, and they will be part of this. We have to go, as you may see, on this chart. Now we are 2020. This will continue until 2022, which will be lots of issues will come up, and the continuation go all the way to 2025. And these newcomers will be all along on this project, that what I have decided now for them. I mean, this is not being negative or positive, I just, to me, it sounds strange.
So when we voted on our IRP, we set policy, and that policy is flexible. We definitely said, as was mentioned several times today, that we have not committed to the thermal units, at least not to five, anywhere between up to five, it was the decision. So Ms. Beers, I cut you off. Would you like to?
Yes.
Give us some direction.
Sure, and I think much of it has been said by Mr. Young and all of you, and yourself, Mr. Mayor, in full well-understanding where council member Agajanian is coming from. We've been extremely careful in terms of placement of agenda items, to be honest, between today and the end of the month, in deference to a new council being seated at the end of the month, and being respectful of that, as well as being respectful of the current seated council, who is here today and has made some decisions related to this item. And this item, as you all know very well, has been a very public and outwardly facing project, where the community has had a lot of time and ability to be able to provide feedback to the city and the city council, and has had a part in the decisions that are before you this evening. Again, this is a limited notice to proceed, and so no decision is being made overall in terms of what this project will 100% look like. But the council did give us very specific direction last July 23 related to these items that have been studied for some time. And that study, as you also know, takes a lot of time and energy from within the organization, as well as a lot of community members who attended many hands-on meetings with Ascend Analytics, who was the outside consultant who helped us with this process. So the feedback was also given from the public, and one of those individuals will be also seated alongside you as a council member at the end of this month. And so those pieces have been done. So in no way are we trying to rush this item through for council to make a decision today to in any way trump a new council being seated at the end of the month. It's, again, a limited notice to proceed. The pieces of this in terms of timelines, we believe we're already behind the eight ball in terms of moving a project forward. Now, whatever that project ultimately looks like, whether it's five Wartzilla units or it's ultimately two or three units based on things that may change in the industry, we don't believe they're going to change to that extent where we would reduce it to two or three, but it may change, and we continue to look at it. By 2024, majority of the boilers at Grayson Power Plant have to be retired and cannot be functional any longer. And as the days go on, and as the weeks go on, and as the months go on, we continue to lose time in terms of the work that needs to get done behind the scenes before we're able to break ground. So we ask you tonight to allow us to move forward with the limited notice to proceed to give us that ability to continue to push the project forward, understanding that overall you are not approving five engines, you are approving up to five possibly, and have every right to adjust what that may look like when it comes before you as described in the schedule that Mark Young provided this evening. And so time is of essence with this project. Honestly, things are going to continue to change, but we don't believe the industry's going to change to the extent where this project would holistically look much different than it is today. Some items may be adjusted, but holistically, we don't believe that it would change, and we would respectfully recommend moving forward with this item tonight.
Excuse me.
Yes, Mr. Agajanian.
My problem is that we are committing ourselves, this project, this is the design side of it, I'm very familiar with this. It costs $702,400 with contingency of $150,000. It means $850,000 at the minimum. These are consulting engineers with those group, which I have done before. And when you sign a contract with this group, whoever will have to perform this, then if you want to change something, you have to change that contract too. I understand this project will take forever, but the principal way which we will proceed will be at this stage. And those two council members, new council members, they have somehow to go along with this, or they come against it, and we start all over. That's what, to me, to do this, I mean, I'm not going to stop, but it doesn't make sense to me, in three weeks, two new council members will be seated here. So I'd rather see those who are going to be here for another four years to be comfortable with this project.
And just as a reminder, so we're not only talking about the Wartzilla, we're also talking about the Tesla battery units. And the owner's engineer, as it relates to the limited notice to proceed in this project, will include the Tesla and the ability to have the site planning for the batteries on site. So it's not just the, again, Wartzilla units. It is also inclusive of the 50 megawatts of battery storage that we've discussed, which can go up to 75 megawatts. So it's a combination of the items that you did consider in July of 2019.
I have a couple of questions. If we pass this tonight, if we agree to this, is there anything that is cast in stone that we can't change?
No, ma'am.
Okay, number two. There will be a second engineer, owner engineer group coming in to check, double-check what the first engineer group has done, and then proceed with the project when the new council will be here.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is the final notice to proceed.
Which is the final notice to proceed.
Excuse me.
So what we're doing tonight is just opening the door to get the project started. There's nothing that can't be changed. It's just a matter of getting this group on board and starting with the SEQA, with Tesla, what's Wartzilla, the EIR, the technicalities that go along with the permit process for demolition, for everything else. So it's nothing that can really change what the community has asked for, that council has asked for.
That's correct. And it also, which is a vital component of this, is that it allows us to be able to make number nine unit a standalone unit and not make it integral to the old system, because in 2024, our boilers will be retired, and then through that operation, we wouldn't be able to use number nine unit, and we're going to keep number nine unit regardless. So we need to be able to do the engineering component to make number nine unit a standalone unit, and to be able to transfer the rack and all the interconnections that the battery is going to take, because I'm hoping that we get both, but if we, even if we just get the battery, there's going to be an infrastructure that needs to be set up. Hazardous waste, fire protection, wastewater, rainwater runoff, things like that still has to be done, and this is the time to allow them to go ahead and do that.
Okay, Mr. Quintero. I was going to say, if I thought this in any way inhibited the new council members from making meaningful change, I wouldn't vote for it, but I think they'll be able to come on board, and if they can persuade others to go in a different direction or have other ideas, then it can be done. But I don't think there's ties there, hands in any way.
One word, then.
Mr. Agajanian.
I did not mean that you cannot change. Everything can be changed. The entire project we can change, or those newcomers will come, or we agree with them, of course, we can change. But if you have a contract for $702,400, and you bring on board an engineering firm or group of people to do this job, when you change it, you have to give change of order, and the money they're going to come back to ask from you will be different. It's not that you can't change. You can change the entire thing. You say, I'm not going to do whatever we want to buy 93 megawatts of gas. We can replace that, we can change it, but the money you're allocating will be different then, because an engineering firm or a company which comes here is expecting to do this. If you change it, then will be change of order, instead of 702,000, maybe it will be $110,000. That's what bothers me.
Okay, that's not a question. That's a statement. Is, I think we just have a difference of opinion. Is there, let's see how it goes. Would someone like to move eight?
Well, I have some questions, though, about, if you don't mind, I'm sorry. First of all, did you want to make a comment about what Mr. Agajanian said?
No, he clarified it with his remark.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you. First of all, as far as choosing the staff of this company that will be working on this project, we always, what is our kind of mode of?
Our standard operating procedure, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, in terms of the team that is chosen, is in conjunction with the city, and for any reason, somebody from the team that is given to us by the contractor does not fit or is not in alignment with what our needs are. We have in the past and will continue in the future to ask for a change on that team. So that's always been part of all the contracts that we have in place.
Okay. And the DER negotiations, are they handled by this, in this contract, the 93 megawatts versus the 50 megawatts?
The DER will be coming to the city council at a later date, so that is not part of the limited notice to proceed and the owner's engineer piece that you're looking at this evening. So that will be a standalone report that will come to the city council with rate impacts that will be associated with it, and studies of that are happening in terms of cost of service analysis today, and that will be coming before you for a recommendation and direction at a later date.
And I'm assuming that is something that the new council will be very interested in?
Yes.
And it's not part of this contract?
That is correct.
The other thing is that we want to make sure to reiterate the conditions that we, for the coming final approval, including things like working on the transmission, the BASA, and those sorts of, is that, would that be part of this contract as well?
That is not part of this contract, but the considerations, I'm assuming the ones that you are referring to are part of the motion that the city council gave us back in July.
Right, right.
And that included a number of items, and I could, I could read some of them, or Ms. Godinez can read them into the record prior to council taking a sort of action.
And that would include the trying to reach the 100% renewables by 2030? Would that be part of their review?
Well, if I could, let me just say, the motion that the council adopted previously, nothing in this motion supersedes that. This is just implementing that first step of it. So everything that, all the conditions that the council put into that motion back in, can't remember what?
July of 2019.
They're still in effect. They're still the guiding document for the GWP staff moving the project forward. This is just something in that first start, so we could read them again. I'm not sure, they don't need to be made part of this motion, because they're already part of the record.
Okay.
And that motion's in place, and it's on our website, and all of the areas that council covered with us that evening, which includes six sections, and some of the sections have subsections to them, is part of the record, as Mr. Garcia indicated.
Okay, and I'll move the item. My questions are answered.
Thank you. I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
I abstain.
Devine?
Yes.
Arpetian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Aaron Agajanian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda, 8D, has been taken off calendar. Actually, it's been moved to March 24. That leaves 8E, public works regarding B-line maintenance facility furniture. U1 is resolution dispensing with the bidding procedures set forth in Glendale Municipal Code GMC Section 4.12.010A1, and authorizing the purchasing administrator to solicit competitive bids, execute a contract for the procurement and installation of furnishings for the new B-line maintenance facility pursuant to GMC Section 4.12.010A3.
Ms. Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We'll go directly to Mr. Emrani, who will provide you with a short presentation.
Mr. Emrani. Report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. As you know, we are moving forward with the substantial completion of the B-line. We're all very excited for the, this great facility to be, to be opening fairly soon, and as part of that, we're working hard to get it ready. One of that, one of those items are ordering the furniture for this facility. So we are requesting the, your approval so that we can have the purchasing administrator basically solicit proposals. We're going to put together the detailed specs for these, for the furniture and submit it to the purchasing administrator, and then he would basically put out a request for quotation to get competitive bids for the furniture. And we were hoping to get these started and ordered as soon as possible, and be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions?
I would like to move the item.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Yes? Devine?
Yes.
Arpetian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Aaron Agajanian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is oral communications. This is a five-minute portion discussion. This limited time is not part of this agenda. Speakers, about five minutes. Council may question or respond to speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager, may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and report.
Rafi Krikorian.
Good evening, council members. I was here two weeks ago. Just to remind you, I played video showing one meeting last year and another meeting this year. And basically, there was, let me start here. Last year, I went, I volunteered and I donated money to Habitat for Humanity. They had a project on Maple Street, and when the project was completed, I got an invite for the opening. And when the project was completed, I got an invite for the opening. And you were there, Mr. Najarian, and you gave a speech. And in that speech, you acknowledged the housing situation. You basically said you're doing everything you can to alleviate the problem, to increase the housing, which was very good and encouraging. But unfortunately, you had that opportunity to actually take action. Two weeks ago, a year ago, you had opportunities to take action. In fact, I was told you get consensus from three council members and you push your agenda forward. Not only did we get three council members, we had four council members. They were all for it. They all urged you to go forward. But you were the only one who didn't argue against it. But I think you tried to inject some kind of controversy where it nonexisted. I believe you said, Mr. Rafi Krikorian, Mr. Krikorian wants to, wants us to upzone, which you know is not true. I never asked for upzoning. I just asked for tinkering in the margins and getting rid of some of the constrictions in regards to developing small units. I mean, if we go the way we're going, you're going to have very, very large 200, 300-unit boxes and next to single-family housing. I think it would be good to have like four, five-unit buildings as well. Because that's, those are, those are the units that aren't being built for reasons that I mentioned before. So you have the opportunity to back up your comments and your words and your promises. But when it came time, you tried to inject controversy. And how is it possible now that four people, four council members come to consensus, they urge you to go forward with this, and it gets buried? How's that possible? I could go on and on about this, but I'm making a personal plea to you, Mr. Najarian. I'm asking you to get in touch with me and tell me what's going on. What is it? I mean, let's just move forward. Let's find a way to work this out. I don't understand your stance. I wish you would just contact me and speak to me one-on-one. Because I really don't understand. I'm left to speculate now. I'm left to speculate. That's not, that's not a healthy way to go. This is not democracy. When four council members urge you to go forward and somehow this thing gets buried, they were told, I mean, don't bury this. And it gets buried. So I'm going to leave it up to you. But we should, we should just resolve this. This is, this is silly. I thank you for your time.
Well, I understand your frustration, but I think you misunderstand my abilities to stop something from coming before this council. As you've seen, in every meeting that we have, it just takes two council members to agree to place something on the agenda, and it has done so. I do not bury anything. I do not have the authority to go to the city staff and say, you know that thing that four council people wanted? Bury it. I don't have that ability. So I understand you're frustrated, but sometimes government works slowly. That's, as mayor, I can only run the meeting and represent the city at public functions like the one you are at. So I presume the topic you're talking about is somewhere in the staff?
Can you give a quick response?
Yeah, why don't you give a response?
On the record, so that it is very clear that no one, not you, not any other council member, no staff has buried this item, nor would we. As you can imagine, there are a number of items that any department works on. And it comes with prioritizing the items that we have before us and our ability to bring something to the city council that has been vetted and ferreted so that we can have a good discussion and the council can have analyzed, well-thought-out, benchmarked items before them for your ultimate policy direction. With that, if you would allow Mr. Lanza Faim to give you a quick, brief update on this item that I'm assuming Mr. Krikorian is referring to, he will do so.
Yeah. Yeah, I kind of resent the fact that I'm being accused of burying something. I think the issues involved are not simple issues. They have land use issues, they have density issues, structural issues. So it might not be a good way to get your, your project advanced throwing out baseless accusations. But let's go to Mr. Lanza Faim.
And I didn't, I didn't like being called insubordinate two weeks ago either. But I think in, in listening to Mr. Krikorian, I think he thinks that an item can just be drafted and brought to you and the code be changed. In fact, there is some analysis we need to go through. There is some prioritization. As I had said to you, we are using a project that must get done, that's on a timeline for a grant. We're using that same process to develop the analysis on exactly what you asked. In fact, we've applied for a grant so that we could accelerate that. And we, I found out today that we have been awarded that grant. So in, rather than me blabbering, if Mr. Calvert can tell you exactly what goes into this, where we are in the situation, you'll see that, in fact, we have not buried it and we've followed through in your exact direction.
Before Mr. Calvert, Mr. Carpe.
Mr. Calvert, can you explain to us one more time, refresh our memories, as to what the request of Mr. Krikorian was and/or is? And where are we in this process? Because my understanding is a zoning code that cannot change overnight or by even bringing it to the council, you can, you can, you have to go back and work on it. And when you want to change a zone or the code, you can't just change one item on one specific project and then something that will affect maybe hundreds of different properties and, and just have a domino effect, maybe negative effect or positive effect on other properties. So that's, I just want to understand one more time what Mr. Krikorian was asking for and go from there.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Arpetian, members of the city council. From my understanding, the concern here is that multifamily properties are not able to achieve the maximum density that they're allowed. And that could be for a number of reasons, because of our zoning or development standards that we have there. You are correct in that this is something that we can't just flip a switch and change it overnight. One, we need to do an analysis. And that relates to economic analysis to make sure that any changes that we were to propose are economically feasible. Obviously, we want to be contextually sensitive and make sure that we're responsive to the zones, the neighborhoods that are around them, the development patterns that are around them as well. We don't want to create a development pattern that is imposing or incompatible with single-family neighborhoods, other multifamily. But that also has an entire process it needs to go through. Obviously, we would bring that to city council during those, during that period, much like we did with the downtown specific plan. We'd also need to go to the planning commission. We'll have to have some outreach along with it. As part of the work program that Mr. Lanza Faim was describing, he referenced the timeline, and that is in regards to our tropical study, part of the South Glendale Community Plan. That is something that we are essentially on a clock for. We have grant obligations. But even more importantly, there are elements to that, that will inform these multifamily development standards. So being able to complete that work or get it substantially completed will give us a foundation and a baseline that would help us expedite mixed-use development, multifamily development, any zoning changes that we would have to make at any point in time. As Mr. Lanza Faim referenced, we did just understand that we are recipients of a grant that we did apply for to put towards these development standards, and that will allow us to expedite the timeline now. We do anticipate coming back to council with, to begin coming back to council by fall of 2020 with what some of these changes could be to the development standards. This wasn't something that we had buried. It was something that we needed resources for. And there are other work programs in front of it that essentially influenced it, that were dependent on some of those pieces. So that's where we are as of today.
I'm sorry, Mr. Arpetian, to close the loop, three things that I think Mr. Krikorian were looking at is the common open space, the height, and the ability to go above three feet with your subdraining garage. So everything would go up higher, you would have less underground costs. Those are all things that we have put into our scope to look at in, in the grant and using the resources that we currently have. I think we need to come back with a change order on an existing contract that you have already let for a lot of the work that we'll be doing.
So basically, this is for all multi-residential zones, like 1250, 1650, 2030, for all of the?
We'd like to look at it across the board, citywide.
And this is for the South, in South Glendale Community Plan?
Well, I'll let you respond.
Well, I'm not, are we getting too far afield?
Because I want to understand, the South Glendale Community Plan was?
Hold on, let me get, let me ask the city attorney.
We're having maybe a quick question, follow-up. That's fine. But yeah, at some point, it's going to start to become a discussion. I apologize. At some point, we're going to have to start to have discussions. So maybe just one quick call, question and answer.
So this is something I have control over, and that's to not violate the Brown Act as, as the person chairing the meeting. So I think you heard his question. If you could sort of make it shorter rather than longer, and we'll wrap this up and move on to the next speaker.
Correct. So the development standards we'd be looking at for multifamily would be across the board, all zones, all residential, multifamily residential zones, and also citywide. It's not dependent just on the South Glendale Community Plan. There are just elements as part of that study that we would use to establish a foundation for those multifamily standards. That's why it falls in kind of sequence of work.
Okay. Thank you very much.
My comments a few months ago had to do with semi-subterranean and using the top of the buildings as open space for the tenants. Wasn't that complicated.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And also, the, any plan that we change or the zone change that we can have, it could be challenged in course, like the South Glendale Community Plan was challenged. And I don't know, when is it coming back to get to a conclusion, so?
Thank you. I'm glad you stuck around. Did you know this question was coming? Maybe. I didn't.
Answer any potential questions.
Okay, thank you. Herbert Milano.
Good evening again, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council and staff. My name is Herbert Milano. Just a quick comment with regard to the last topic. You might want to look at Senate Bill 902 that was just presented by Senator Anthony Weiner concerning zoning and upzoning, especially up to 10 units for a parcel, for these infill areas within the downtown area. I've kept here to speak with regard to two topics. They're both related. One is the impact of the coming recession on housing and housing vacancy. And the second one is a request for a reevaluation of the short-term rental ordinance that you passed in December. They're both related. Oftentimes, when I see the city council taking action on certain items that impact us in future years, what I, what I often see missing in these discussions are the impacts of recessions that generally occur about twice every 10 years. Now, we've had the longest expansion in a very long time, and this recession is bound to be a very significant one. But what happens, I've been a landlord for 36 years, and what happens during a recession is that younger people go and move back with their parents. And there are other activities that take place, increasing the vacancy rate. So if you make policies based on the current vacancy rate or the expected housing shortage, without looking at the potential for recessions and how they impacted, this is important for you to consider. The, you need to look at the contingencies of the economy going forward and what generally occurs. I expect the vacancies and the loss of jobs to be significant. And I also expect, and I think that the city should request a financial report on the significant impact that this recession is going to have on the city, especially the pension obligations as being one of them, and the reduction in the sales tax income. So doing and presenting ordinances without looking at the overall future impact that are generally, they generally occur on a regular basis, should be part of this. So here are my points with regard to the short-term rental reevaluation. There is nothing in the short-term rental ordinance that justifies not allowing the rental of our homes while we are away. It doesn't increase the availability of apartments or homes. So, and it does not impact, there's no record of impacting the quality of life of neighbors in those, for those property owners or those living adjacent to those property owners. And I'd like to hear a justification for it. Why does that particular condition exist? If your objective is making more apartments available, allowing homeowners to rent their home while they're away, visiting their kids, taking a vacation, does not fit. And I'm suggesting that you reconsider that section. The second objective that I have is with regard to those people who are in dire need of housing. And I am a Section 8 landlord, and I've had one and two units during the past 20 years. And generally, I've had to subsidize those, to, in other words, rent it at a price lower than market significantly. My suggestion is that you allow a short-term rental for every Section 8. This way, really addressing the needs of individuals who need it. In campaigns, when you run for office, you always, I always hear, especially when I had it translated from Armenian, how much you care about Section 8. Well, you have 3,000 people on the waiting list for Section 8. What an incredible way of actually allowing this quid pro quo with regard to this issue, because it allows us to compensate, right? And allow us to, shall we say, subsidize those Section 8 tenants. And the last one is, the people who are most in need of housing are the people who don't have any, the homeless individuals. And I made a request that the ordinance be changed so that the transient occupancy tax be directed towards homeless services in total, completely, for that purpose. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
I have to make one comment. I mean, I think we've been going back and forth on this issue every, every other week. On one hand, we talk about shortage of housing and affordable housing. But on the other hand, this ordinance is about short-term rentals. These are people who are vacationing from other cities that come to Glendale and they want to be, for example, my neighbor for five days or eight days. It's not about increasing our housing stock. This does not help our housing stock. That was the whole, we spent two or three meetings on talking about this issue. We keep going back and forth on this issue of shortage of housing stock and affordable housing. But short-term rentals are short-term rentals. These are rental units that, I mean, people spend their life savings in purchasing a house, and the next thing you know, there is a house right next door to you that your neighbors change every five to eight days. And I, the reason that I think we went to this route was, that is not fair. That is not fair at all to turn our residential neighborhoods, single-family neighborhoods, or even apartment buildings into rentals that you don't know who your neighbor is tomorrow. And this has nothing to do with, you know, not, not trying to provide affordable housing or increasing our housing stock. Yes, we talk about affordable housing a lot, and this council has done a lot to provide affordable housing. We put our neck out, went out and got Measure S approved and spent 85, 90% of it on affordable housing projects. But this has nothing to do with increasing our housing stocks by allowing short-term rentals in single-family residential neighborhoods.
Thank you. Kathy E.
Hi. Hello, Mayor and City Council, everybody that is still here tonight. Okay, I haven't done this before, but I just want to say thank you. If I'm just looking down, because I have a hard time reading my small print here. Thank you for revisiting the Parkway ordinance. This has lifted a heavy weight, not only for our family, our family will be happy, but the residents around us that come to us and ask us about things going on, they feel they're being heard. And also, many of our neighbors are going to feel like their voices are being heard. I still need to read what I wrote tonight, because this was not on the docket for tonight. So I thought it was very important that I come and tell you our experience as a family and things that have gone on, so all of you know, some of you that have signed this know what has taken place. We would be happy to remove our nice drought-tolerant ground cover stones if all other residents had to comply. Take a look, historical homes, corner homes, all have not received any violation. But many of them have the same ground cover stones that we do and significantly larger areas of stones than we do. and significantly larger areas of stones than we do. We would be okay to remove our drought-tolerant ground cover if all other residents had to comply to the ordinance that cannot be enforced by the city, as we were told by city employees when we did visit the city on multiple occasions. We were also told that this parkway thing was a waste of resources and time. City employees, city council persons are exempt from turning in any residence, as we have been informed and told by employees. We know that after having this violation anonymously targeting our home leads us to several conclusions. One of my conclusions, the city needs money and will target residents who will pay a fee without questioning anything, because maybe they are fearful. Number two, another conclusion, someone is hoping we will move. We received two letters following this violation, this happened eight months ago, by the way, asking us to sell. They would purchase our home if we had done work on the home without a permit. I have other things here that I'll bypass. Number three, persons, a person or a neighbor who initiated a complaint about our parkway will use fear tactics to have us contemplate selling, which we've already seen and watched happen to one of our neighbors. We got two follow-up phone calls a week later after our violation, wanting to buy our home. "It didn't matter if we had permits in the city," they said. Number four, we also concluded, "It makes us think that our flag that we fly every day, because my uncle served in World War II, my dad served in the Korean War, my family has served, done a lot of service in our country." Our flag was taken down and throwed down, our flagpole, and left hanging on the ground the same week that we received the violation. Is that a coincidence? It was during the summer. There was no rain, no wind. Number five, another conclusion, I thought. The city council, and this is at this time, after these eight months, didn't take the time to fully understand the impact that this ordinance would have on residents. It is unfair using neighbors as a sword against other neighbors, targeting those that may not like or want you out of their neighborhood, and it can all be done anonymously, as stated by several city employees. Quote, "We can't enforce this. It is only complaint-driven," end quote. Interesting. No complaints about our neighbors a few doors up, around the corner, couple streets up. Now, I won't go into the numbers, but a few of us actually went out and did pictures and addresses, and we compiled over 500 violations. We did door-knocking, and many residents told us, "We never received a violation." It took up a lot of my time and energy, and it was very stressful. My children heard about it. We got calls on a regular basis, "What is the city doing?" So, my other conclusion is, which you have done tonight, which I'm so happy about, the city council needs to readdress this particular ordinance. It's selective. It's targeting. It's stressful to go through many months not having anything on the agenda at a council meeting, even though many of you know this has been an ongoing issue in the city since last August. Our fine has doubled in the last 30 days, and thank you for taking that and putting that on hold for our family. We have been told to wait until after the election, and the council would put it on the agenda. Why are we receiving fines? Well, I'll bypass this a little bit. The ordinance, as stated in number... I even wrote it down, number 5866. It was signed in in December 2015 by Garpetian, Devine Friedman, Najarion, and Sananian was absent that night. I would think that the city council would encourage harmony, peaceful coexistence with neighbors. But instead, what happened was residents, you're using residents to do the enforcement for you, anonymously, secretly, indiscriminately.
Kathy, if you could wrap it up. Your time is up.
One council member came out to look at the issues. I just want to say right now, I'm really happy about that. In conclusion, and this is it, I only have a few sentences. I have renewed my appreciation for our council. My parents moved into their first apartment here after their wedding. My sister was born in this city and died at convalescent care not too far from here. I've lived in Glendale for the last 10 years. My daughter, son-in-law, and granddaughter live in Montrose. We talk about this at every family gathering. I am looking forward to having a joyful conversation with them on my way home. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carpettian?
Kathy, all I have to say to you is, don't feel bad, because this has been going on for a long, long time, not only on the landscape issue. Take an example on the windows that was replaced on a house. There are people who purchased homes 15, 20 years ago, and all of a sudden, they receive a notice that their windows do not comply with the house because they were replaced by previous owners, and these guys didn't know that. They purchased the house with those windows. And we had hundreds of cases that criminal charges were filed against the owners because their windows were replaced without permits. And the new buyer didn't know about it. They said, "You purchased this house. It's your responsibility to go out and find out if your windows have a permit or not. But if you drive on the same street, there may be another 20 houses on the same street that replaced the windows." They replaced the windows without permits. And they don't, you know, go with the design of the house or the architectural style of the house. But none of them were targeted, because this was targeted complaining. They had a new neighbor. They didn't like them. They targeted them. So, this has been going on for a long time. It's not nothing new. But I'm glad that this council came to a conclusion tonight, at least to ease off on this enforcement issue, at least on the landscaping. But there's so many other issues that this community is facing, and it's all targeted, because only whoever gets complained against, you know, the code enforcement, they cannot just not show up. We get a complaint, they have to send an inspector out. It's not... It's nothing personal. That's what I'm trying to say. It's just... It's been happening for... Yeah, but I understand. I understand. But this has been going on for a long, long time on different, different issues, so.
Thank you. And so, the alternative at budget time would be to increase our code enforcement team. So, everyone is inspected, and it's not driven by a late-night phone call to the hotline for that. But we'll discuss that at budget time. Nancy Sumner is my last card.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you, Paula and Frank, for bringing this and seconding the vote tonight on the parkway violation. I think Kathy spoke eloquently and brought you up to the history. This has been going on since August of last year. But since you are going to relook at this, I'm going to give you a little bit of head start where you should start. An action item, June 18, 2019, was approved by the city manager. I have read the action item. Standards for landscaping in parkways, as I stated in August, when I was asked by the city council, I came to speak to you to relook at this unenforceable ordinance. The standards that are prohibited for parkways are all over the city. Just driving here, I counted 75. I go different routes every time I come here. June 18, 2019, page three of the state city council may consider changes in the following three items. Number one, 50% ground cover can go upwards or downwards. Look around the city. It's gone upwards, downwards, sideways, and God knows where else. The prohibition of gravel, mulch, and other loose materials may be rescinded. I sent you all pictures last August. I just have landscape stones. This is common throughout the entire city. As she stated, four blocks up, there's homes. I don't want to give addresses. I will never talk about my other neighbors. The height limit on non-living material may be increased from six to 18 inches. Many big rocks are around the city, parkways, locks, cactuses. This is all in an action item, 2019. Former Governor Brown in 2018 talked about drought. He wanted everybody to look at local standards that embrace sustainability and attractiveness. Our ground cover is both sustainable, attractive, all the neighbors we know and the gardeners uses this parkway because they like sitting on it. It's comfortable. They've never tripped on it, and they said, "We wish this was more throughout the city." Please look at the alternatives on page four of the same thing we hope you will rescind. The citations that you have sent out. Today is March 10. Eight months have gone by. I'm glad that you voted to release review this. I've given you a place to start. I loved what he said when he said, "Across the board, citywide." Not selective, the way it's been done. It should be in alignment with the new governor we have of drought-tolerant plants. People would rather have dead grass than to do something nice that looks nice. I applaud the city council, and I truly applaud you, Paula, and you, Frank, for doing this. I did bring this to the city council. Some of you did get back. And Mayor, I know that you can do this right for all the city people in the city. I personally called you to, because emotionally, I'm going to keep it together, because this has impacted my family. I have my citations here for those that are listening. Just so you know, $122 for the citation, $382 to come out and re-inspect.
Thank you. Nancy, I don't have any other cards. Do we have any new business? Ms. Devine?
We do. Let's see, I would like a second by my council member that pursuant to Article 8, Section 1 of the City Charter and Government Code, Section 54957, Point 1A5, the city attorney's appointments of Mia Yun and Doreen Marterosian as principal assistant city attorneys for the city of Glendale are hereby approved. And further, that a written copy of this motion be transcribed, certified, and delivered by the city clerk to the Office of the Civil Service Commission of the city of Glendale as and for the written statement required by Article 24, Section 5, Subsection 2 of the Charter.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Rokoff, please.
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned.